We can, we can begin? Hi, hello.
Morning.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I'm on Zoom.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, call Marisa Delmar Maxino here on the Zoom. Good morning, colleagues.
Regular meeting of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education to order. May I ask Congressman Isidro Lumayag to lead us in prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I request everybody to please stand up for the invocation? It has brought ourselves in the Holy Spirit's presence again, even as we remain seated. Almighty and ever-loving God, as we begin our work this day, fill this room with your grace, love, and wisdom, so that whatever we do and accomplish will be in accordance with your holy will and divine plan. Guide us in this committee meeting, so that we may be united in mutual respect and health exchange of ideas. Help us to work together as it is and to bring out the best in one of us. Grant us the spirit of discernment and right judgment, so that we can be sure that what we have chosen and done are the things that will please honor and give you all the praises and glory that you truly deserve. May the work that we do and the decisions that we make bring happiness, hope, and faith to the people that we encounter each day and redound to the good of our brethren. All this we pray in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, your Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you very much, Congressman Sid. Do I hear a motion to dispense with the calling of the roll?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Senior Vice Chair Chato?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we dispense with the calling of the roll of members.
Second.
Thank you. So we have the motion to dispense with the calling of the roll, duly seconded, hearing no objection, motion carried. We will forego with the approval of the December, September 6 and 12 meetings minutes, because we have not sent you the copy of this meetings minutes, so we will have this approved next meeting. Again, I would like to reiterate my good morning to everybody who are here physically and those on Zoom, both our colleagues here in the United Congress and our resource persons. This will be our ninth regular meeting of the committee and the first of a series of weekly meetings that the committee will be conducting. This resumption of session until the next congressional recess in December of this year. Aside from the committee meetings that we will hold weekly, we'll be busy with the preliminary or plenary deliberations on some of the bills that have been approved by the committee and the committee reports have been filed already. And very soon, these bills will be tackled in the Committee on Appropriation and the Committee on Ways and Means. And those committee reports will be filed very soon. Before we go over the items in the agenda, I would like to recognize our members who are present physically and those on Zoom, of course, starting with Congressman Isidro Lumayag, who is physically present here from the First District of South Cotobato, present online. We have our senior member, Vice Chair Representative Edgar Chato of the First District of Bohol. We have also Representative Tirso Edwin Garjola of the CWS Party List. We have also Representative Ralph Wendell Tulpo of the First or of the Second District of Quezon City. We have also Representative Ivan Howard Ginto of the Pinuno Party List. We have also Representative Francisco Paulo Ortega de Pif of the First District of La Union. We have also Representative Dric Simé Cardema of the Duterte Youth Party List. We have also Representative Gabriel Bordado Junior of the Third District of Cabarini Sur. Congressman Rodolfo Ompong Ordáñez of the Senior Citizens Party List. Representative El Pijo Barzaga of the Fourth District of Cabite. We have Representative Tracy or Jean Tracy Cagas of the Long District of Dabau del Sur. Representative Alan Dohali of the Second District of Dabau del Norte. We have Second District Representative of Mariquina, Representative Estela Luskimbo. Congressman Maximo Dalug Junior of the Long District of Mountain Province. Congressman Samuel S. Versosa Junior of the Tutock Twin Party List. We have Congressman Edsel Gallos of the Second District of Cebu. We have Representative Dani Domingo of the First District of Bulacan. We have Representative Lord Dan Suwan of the First District of Cagayan de Oro. We have Representative Christine Alexi Tutor of the Third District of Bohol. We have Representative Mary Michi Kahayon Uy of the Second District of Kalokan City. We have Representative Carl Nicolas Carri of the Fifth District of Leite and Representative Maria Culiantes of the Third District of Batangas. We have also physically present, we have Congresswoman Larni Roque of the Fourth District of Bucadon. We have also Representative Yolojo Rodríguez of the Long District of Catanduanes. Thank you, those who are here present and those online. Now, I would like to call on our comsec to introduce our resource persons and other guests present this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Legal and Legislative Service and Commission on Higher Education are at Attorney's Peter Lloyd Parpion, the Chief of the Legislative Division of Education Division of the Legal and Legislative Service of CHED. Ms. Eleanor Fernández, a member of the Technical Committee on Maritime Education of the CHED. Ms. Sheila Halbuena from the Office of Programs and Standards of CHED. We also have Dr. Arnulfo Mascarinhas, the President of Bicol University. Dr. Emeliano Rosan, Vice President for Academic Affairs of Bicol University. Dr. Dorece Nantes, President of Southern Luzon State University. Dr. Freddy Bulawan, Regional Director of CHED Region 4. Commodore Joel Abutal, Superintendent of the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy or PMMA. Dr. Norberto Olavides, the President of the Palumpon Institute of Technology. Dr. Albin Reyes, Vice President for Administration and Finance of the Zamboanga State College of Marine Sciences and Technology. Dr. Oliver Tito, Vice President for Academic Affairs of the Zamboanga State College of Marine Sciences and Technology. Mr. Mark James Alba, Budget Officer of the Zamboanga State College of Marine Sciences and Technology. We also have Chief Engineer Rudy Paíso, the Assistant Vice President of the Maritime Academy of Asia and the Pacific or MAAP. We also have Ms. Myla Kadawan, the OIC Executive Director of the National Maritime Polytechnic. Captain Jofonce Tunya Kao, the Executive Vice President of the Training Director of the MAAP. Mr. Sabino Zar Manglikmott, the President of the Philippine Association of Maritime Institutions. We also have Mr. Jose de Scoliar, the Supervising Technical Education and Skills Development Specialist, Regional Operations Management Office of the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority or TESDA. We also have Attorney Joyce Balong of the TESDA Legal Division. And also Ms. Tonya P. So, the Technical Education and Skills Development Specialist of the Policy and Planning Division of the Planning Office of TESDA. We also have Attorney Janelle Albina, the Chancellor of the Cagayan de Oro Campus of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines. We also have Ms. Marian Jenny Lu Reyes, the OIC Chief Economic Development Specialist of the Governance Staff of the National Economic and Development Authority or NEDA. From the Union of Local Authorities of the Philippines, we have Mr. Jake Barrios. We also have Engineer Alfredo Panuela Junior of TESDA Region 12 in South Cotobato. From the Philippine Association of Private Schools, Colleges, and Universities or POP School, we have its President, Dr. Antonio Del Carmen. We also have Mr. Jose Albar Cato, the Vice President for Internal Affairs of the Filipino Association of Mariners Employment. That's all for now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Melanie. Before we continue, I would like to recognize online also our good friend, the Congressman of the GP Party List, Congressman Usei Guy Padiernos. Okay, let's proceed with the discussion of the various bills that are in our agenda, starting from House Bill 152, an act establishing the Bicol University College of Veterinary Medicine in the city of Ligao, Province of Albay. This bill is sponsored by Representative Cabrero. May I ask Congressman Cabrero?
Mr. Chair, I'll adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 152.
As the sponsorship?
As the sponsorship of Congressman Cabrero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Congressman Rodríguez. So there is a motion duly?
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so hearing no objection on the motion that the explanatory note of House Bill 152 be adopted as the sponsorship message of the author of House Bill 152. So the other item, a similar bill, House Bill 4429 or 4439, I was called by Congressman Suárez that we defer discussion on this particular bill and we will do it on Monday. So we accept the request of Congressman Suárez. So we will reschedule House Bill 4439 on Monday, that will be November 14. Before we continue, I would like to recognize Representative Raúl Daniel Manuel of the Kabataan Party List, who is physically present this morning. Can we hear the President of Bicol University to give comment on this particular bill? Dr. Arnulfo Mascarinhas of the Bicol University to comment on House Bill 152.
Thank you very much, Chairman Nago. To the members of this committee and Congress, good morning, everyone. Regarding House Bill Number 1152, Bicol University is supporting the proposal, proposed bill of Congressman Didi Cabrero. As a matter of fact, we have already coordinated with the City Government of Ligao last year. And two weeks ago, we also visited the proposed site of the proposed caris of Betmed in Ligao City. So as far as Bicol University is concerned, we are fully supportive of this proposal coming from Congressman Didi Cabrero, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mascarinhas. Can we call now Attorney De La Cruz of the Regional Director of CHED of Region 5? Director De La Cruz?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to everyone. As far as House Bill 152 is concerned, the Commission on Higher Education Regional Office 5 interposes no objection in House Bill 152 with six establish the Bicol University College of Veterinary Medicine in the city of Ligao, Province of Albay. The House Bill is laudable in its supports the efforts of the Commission on Higher Education in producing graduates of Doctor of Veterinary Medicine Program who are adept in protecting public health through the prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and control zoonotic diseases affecting the health of animals and people. While RA 5521, otherwise known as an act establishing Bicol University and for other purposes, Section 6, disposes the Bicol University Board of Regents the power to provide for the establishment in colleges and schools as it may deem necessary. Region 5, however, receives the university for full compliance of all the requirements under CHED CMO Number 1 Series of 2018, which is the policy standards and guidelines for the Doctor of Veterinary Medicine Program. And, Mr. Chairman, we would like to note, however, that the Doctor of Veterinary Medicine Program is already being offered by the Bicol University in Obatan Campus as approved by the Bicol University Board of Regents through BOR Resolution Number 743 Series of 2022, last April 2022, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Attorney De La Cruz. I would like to find out from them if there is already a resolution approved by the Board of Regents of Bicol University creating a College of Veterinary Medicine at the Bicol State University.
Mr. Chair, can I answer that question?
Yeah, please.
For now, we have only approved the offering of the program, that is the Doctor of Betmed, but not the creation of the College of Betmed.
And you have all the facilities and the infrastructure required to put up a College of Veterinary Medicine in Bicol University?
We now have the faculty complement, Mr. Chair, except for, of course, the building, which we expect Congress will provide us for us, the funds, for us to be able to put up the building and the required equipment for the college.
Thank you, yes. May we hear the Officer of CHED Nacional, Attorney Parolan, representing the CHED Chairman Popoy De Vera?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the committee and to all other guests and resource persons now present, especially to our secretariat. Attorney Spake Parolan here, I'm the Director for Legal and Legislative Service. Our chairperson and executive director are both unavailable for today's hearing to attend to some very urgent matters, equally urgent matters. Mr. Chair, to the honorable members, thus I was tasked to speak on behalf of the Commission on Higher Education, at least for the Central Office. And regarding these two bills, we law the creation of the Colleges of Veterinary Medicine Colleges in both universities as contained in both House Bills. Though what we would, as was mentioned earlier by Attorney Septon, we always insist that the provision regarding compliance with the policy standards and guidelines or PSGs or the Doctor of Veterinary Medicine Program be complied with prior to the offering of the program to ensure that they are really fully compliant and are capable of providing the competencies required from our veterinary medicine graduates and practitioners. Also, Mr. Chair, we would also like to raise the importance of ensuring that both colleges to be created, both veterinary colleges to be created, take note also and comply with CMO Number 14 of 2019 of CHED, which is the policies and guidelines on the issuance of certificate of program compliance to state universities and colleges and LUCs. This is the process of CHED where though state universities and colleges are actually allowed to establish programs, the quality of these programs are still verified and validated and assured by the Commission on Higher Education by the issuance of the appropriate certificate of program compliance, Mr. Chair. Also, we'd also, of course, would insist on the reiteration and compliance of both colleges, both programs and colleges with the requirements, for the minimum requirements for libraries of higher education institutions common to all programs as well as the requirements for student services and similar requirements common to all state universities and colleges, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Parolan. I would like you to look at Section 4 of this particular bill. It answers basically your concern as to the compliance of the Bicol University to the various requirements of CHED. Having said that, I think Section 4 of this particular bill will definitely ensure that the offering of such program or the college will be in conformance with the requirements as set forth by the Commission on Higher Education. Thank you. Any other point, any comment from our members of the committee who are physically present and online?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, our Senior Vice Chair Chato?
Yes, I just want to be educated. Let me ask the representative of CHED. The Board of Regents of every state college and university, is it correct that they are authorized to establish courses in their respective institutions? Will it really require for operationalization a law in Congress? Or is it sufficient that CHED approves it?
Actually, Mr. Chair, it is not required, congressional approval is not really required. The Board of Regents can establish the program and CHED can evaluate it and issue the appropriate certificate of program compliance. But I think some state universities and colleges prefer that that certain colleges or certain programs be established via separate law to ensure that the program, the budgetary support and resources for these programs are mandatorily incorporated in the NEP and eventually the JA, Mr. Chair. If they have this, there is a notion and there are instances when this is this is validated, that it's easier to secure resources for your programs if there is already a law, which is that the government should, in fact, fund these programs because they are, they have congressional mandate, Mr. Chair. But, to answer your question, no need for but strictly speaking and technically, there is really no need for congressional approval of colleges or programs in state universities and colleges, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The advantages of having a separate law is very clear, so thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Senior Vice Chair Chato. This also includes the provision on duty and tax exemption of the university should they purchase items outside of the country. If this bill is going to be approved, Attorney Parolan?
Actually, Mr. Chair, there is already an existing law that allows for tax duty tariffs and duties exemption for state universities and colleges when they when they bring in or import materials or equipment to be used for education purposes, Mr. Chair. But there are times that additional grants are included or a different rate is incorporated, thus the need for congressional approval of a tax and duties exemption provision.
Okay, so it will not harm us or the proponent of the bill if Section 5 will be included in this?
Actually, it is.
I'm sorry about the fact that there is an existing law that exempts them from the payment of import tax and other related taxes that might be collected by the Bureau of Internal Revenue.
For its implications, right now, Mr. Chair, under the current tax and legal framework, Section 5 could be deemed as a redundancy. But other than that being a redundancy of an existing provision already, other than that, there's no real legal harm or consequence. Though I cannot say for future legislative actions that may be taken where the main law or our tariff code could be amended or the benefits or incentives for certain, general incentives and exemptions are rationalized, having a separate law might, again, prove to be beneficial. But that's a, that's a matter for our tax and finance experts, Mr. Chair, which the DOF might be better able to respond to or comply with.
Thank you, Attorney Parolan, though your answer to my question. Now, before we continue, I would like to recognize Congresswoman Maria Carmen Samora of the First District of Dabau de Oro and Congressman Adrian J. Advincula of the Third District of Cabite. Yes, Congresswoman Larni?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move for the approval of House Bill 152 and its committee report, subject to style and amendments. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there is a motion duly seconded that we approve House Bill 152, including its committee report, subject to style and amendment, hearing no objection, motion carried. Thank you very much and congratulations. Now, let's proceed to the next item in the agenda. We have two actually related bills. One is House Bill 2458, an act mandating the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy to select one cadet from each congressional district every year to comprise its incoming class. This is sponsored by Congressman Rupus Rodríguez. And the other one is House Bill 4835, an act mandating the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy to select one cadet from each congressional district is sponsored by Representative Agabas of Pangasinan. May we ask any of the authors to present these two bills? Okay, I think Congresswoman Rupus Rodríguez is indisposed right now. What about Congresswoman Agabas? Is not present anybody you'd like to?
Mr. Chair?
Our Vice Chair Rodríguez will sponsor these two bills.
Mr. Chair, I will sponsor the House Bill 2458 by Representative Rupus Rodríguez and the House Bill 4835 by Representative Premicia Agabas. And adopt also the explanatory notes of the, of these two bills. Mr. Chair, for the record, the bill was approved by the House in the 7th and 8th Congress, but remain pending in the Senate, Mr. Chair. but remain pending in the Senate, Mister Chair.
Yes, so you want to move that, I mean, you want to have that motion recorded, Mister Congressman?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Can you put that into motion, your motion earlier?
Yes, Vice Chair, I put it in the motion, this bill, two four five eight and four eight three five, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, it has been moved that House Bills four five eight four eight three fives explanatory notes be adopted as sponsorship messages of both sponsors of these two bills. Hearing no objection, motion carried. May I call now the head of the Philippine, the PMMA Commodore Joel Abutal to come out with his position on these two measures. Commodore Abutal?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning to Chairman Mark Go and to the members of the CHD. Honorable members, good morning, everyone. And I would like to thank also Congressman Rodriguez for taking the sponsorship together with the with Representative Rupus Rodriguez and Representative Martin L. Premicia Agabas to sponsor the bill mandating PMMA to have one candidate per district. This is a recognition for us with our advocacy that the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy as a government institution seeks ways to provide sustainable means to support the advocacy on peace and development of our country, especially across the Archiblago. Also, we are in full support of this noble initiative to give equal opportunity to everyone dreaming of becoming a PMMA graduate. We believe that one of the meaningful ways is to provide gainful employment opportunity to all qualified Filipinos across the Philippines. The PMMA then fully supports the House Bill number two four five eight and House Bill and number four eight three five, otherwise known as the Acts mandating the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy to select one cadet from each congressional district every year to comprise its incoming class freshman. However, Mister Chair, with this opportunity lies challenges as well. The current charter of the PMMA, the Republic Act three six eight zero, originally approved in nineteen sixty-three, poses challenges and restrictions on how to maximize the potential of these house bills. As of the moment, PMMA is shorthanded in manpower as far as faculty, admin, and fiscal needs. Our annual budget, which we utilize to provide quality training to our cadets also depends largely on the different rules and regulations set to our colleges and not as a maritime academy, which poses a mismatch of our mandate and the resources the national government appropriates for us. Therefore, we suggest the following for inclusion in this house bill. First, include in the title and appropriating funds therefore to ensure efficient implementation. Second, the number of freshmen to be accepted from each district shall be in addition to the current allowable number of freshmen being admitted by the PMMA. Third, with the considerable increase in the number of incoming cadets of the PMMA, appropriate budgetary requirements must be included in the provisions such as additional facilities like barracks, classrooms, mess halls, and other as necessary. Additional equipment, particularly on simulators and other laboratory equipment, meals allowances, it being increased in the budget, and other benefits provided to the PMMA cadets for the creation of new testing areas in the different districts, especially in the far-flung areas with appropriate budget. Number five, we would like to reiterate the following, which is also included in the bill. Each applicant must comply with the requirements set forth by the PMMA Board of Admissions regarding qualifications of applicants. Each applicant must pass all the procedures of admission process such as the entrance examination, neuropsychological examination, and medical or dental screening. They must complete and pass the provisional period before appointment as fourth-class management. They must abide with all academic and training rules and regulations once and rode. Six, the PMMA shall maintain the current national selection process to provide avenue to all applicants who pass the criteria but not part of this act. As of this time, as based on our record, there are around two hundred fifty-three, correct me if I'm wrong, legislative districts all over the country. And the PMMA, as of the moment, the latest enrollment for school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, only three hundred eighty-one incoming freshmen. As this is the number that can be supported by our current budget. As superintendent, I took the liberty of collecting data from our records and admissions office. Based on gathered data, our registrar recorded that the highest number of second, third, and fourth-class management who are enrolled in school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three came from mostly National Capital Region. Our second class such as, second class around twenty-two, third class is thirty-six, and fourth class forty-one, all coming from National Capital Region. On the contrary, the highest number of first-class cadets from Cordillera Administrative Region, particularly in Kalinga, we have twenty-five. It should be noted that no fourth class nor second class came from Region One, particularly in Ilocuzur. While there is a lone cadet who came from Region Four B in Romblon. Accordingly, some of the provinces only bear one cadet, but not equitable to all districts. So, what we would like to do with this is we support the bill by Congressman Rupus and Congresswoman Agabas to be instituted and become part of our law. With the one hundred percent employment of the PMMA graduates, with the strong support of our partners, it is guaranteed that the increasing number of PMMA students and graduates will eventually lead the socioeconomic development of the Filipinos in our nation, thus supporting peace and development, particularly in the countryside. Thus, providing a slot in each district would result to improve equity among Filipinos all over the country as well as taking the best of those who would be taken through the national selection. The honorable members of the Congress, let PMMA lead the way by supporting this bill.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commodore Joel. So, right now, you are accepting how many people all in all every year? Two hundred, how many, Commodore Joel?
The exam is for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. There are, there are around six thousand applicants. And as of this year, actually, we tried to get five hundred on the first school day, but as of this time, we have three hundred seventy-eight of them left in the first year.
So, three hundred seventy-eight, on a regular basis, your total acceptance rate is about three hundred plus.
Actually, two hundred fifty are our average intake every year.
Now, this bill, you want it on top of this two hundred fifty, we will have one from each congressional district. So, if there are two hundred fifty-three districts, we will have additional two hundred fifty plus two or two fifty, you will have a a total number of students of about more than five hundred.
If I measure, we would like to have it on a standard basis by providing another one hundred on top of two hundred fifty-three congressional districts.
Okay, so what about your existing one? The average is two hundred fifty and you want to keep that number plus the the bill says one per congressional district. So, you will have two hundred fifty-three plus two fifty, that is five hundred three, and you want one hundred more?
No, sir. What I mean is that the current intake of PMMA, which is, it is not equitable to across the country. We would like to have an equitable recruitment of two hundred fifty-three plus another one hundred for the national selection. So that those who are outside of a congressional district can still join PMMA.
Yes, what about your current number of two hundred fifty, which you accept every year? So, you are talking only of one hundred plus two fifty-three? Is that all what you?
That's the initial plan that we would like to take, sir, so that we can accommodate.
Your two fifty will not be included in this proposal?
Not yet, sir.
So, in the, now, what is the current capacity of PMMA in terms of number of students that you can accommodate?
We can accommodate seven hundred fifty, sir.
Seven hundred fifty, so there is no need for additional funding for this congressional district of two hundred fifty-three because you have a capacity of seven hundred?
Yes.
What you simply wanted is there will be distribution of sources of cadets coming to PMMA from the various districts in the country?
Exactly, sir. That's one, sir.
Okay, because you have identified several items. One is, you know, there should be funding, additional funding that should be provided for under this particular bill because you will be adding two hundred fifty-three new students. But if your capacity says seven hundred, you don't need additional funding because you are still within your current capacity.
That is, if we will only go to the congressional district, but we don't want to lose also the chance of getting cadets coming from national selection. As a sir, the system is that, okay, we have people in the congressional, we were able to get the equitable recruitment. On the other hand, there are also other youths who would like to join that can be taken by PMMA based on our national selection. So, it's now a two-prong, it's those coming from congressional district and those coming from national selections all over the country.
And you want that the one hundred will come from your national selection and the two hundred fifty will be coming from the two hundred fifty districts in the country? But your capacity, if you add this, this is three hundred fifty-three, but your capacity right now is seven hundred.
Yes.
And the number of cadets that you accept every year is two hundred fifty, coming from the national selection that you do.
That's right, sir.
So, if we will add more from two fifty to three hundred fifty-three, you still have an excess capacity. Am I right with that interpretation?
We, we will be lacking facility in terms of barracks and classrooms.
So, even if you have that capacity of seven hundred, you still have requirements of it's like, it's like dormitories or barracks.
Because the cadets are staying in the quarters, sir.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask now the Regional Director or the CHED Technical Committee on Maritime Education, Ms. Eleanor Fernandez, to give her comment to the proposed bill and the points raised by Commodore Joel Abutal?
Thank you very much, Honorable Representative Mike Go and also members of this meeting right now. On behalf of the Commission on Higher Education, we consider the noble intention of the House Bill two four five eight and House Bill four eight three five. We do believe in the quality of program offering of the Philippine Merchant Marine Academy. Hence, there will be more quality graduates and future seafarers in the country. We support and interpose as no objection the objectives of these two house bills. Hence, the Commission on Higher Education proposed the passage of House Bill two four five eight and four eight three five into law. That would be all, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fernandez. Yes, before we continue, I would like to recognize Congresswoman J. C. Victoria Yu of the Second District of San Wangga del Sur. She is physically present with us this morning. Yes.
Tony Spocky, Mister Chair.
Yes, Tony Parolan, you are recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. Regarding the bill, yes, we reiterate and validate the position based by our colleague from the Office of Program and Standards Development, OPSD, of the Commission on Higher Education. But we do join the call of Commodore Abutal, our PMMA Superintendent, regarding the possible danger that if we don't increase the resources or the funding for PMMA, but we do increase, increase the number of students beyond its capacity right now. What we fear is that this could lead to a decline in the quality of maritime education being provided by the institution. So, this is, since the bill is relatively unclear also on on the selection process, the bill as is written seems to be different from the bill is quite general in its statement that it should only be that all congressional districts should have students or should be represented in the studentry of the PMMA. But the interpretation could be different as well. As, for example, as was stated by Commodore Abutal, their interpretation is that this could be, the number would be on top of the the original number that they already accommodate through their existing national exam program or system. The way it is written in the bill, it could also be interpreted as well. Well, the only requirement is that there must be one student from the regular, from the congressional district. So, if there is already a representative from the congressional district who passed the national exam, then there's no need for, for an additional representative from that congressional district under the said bill, if ever this comes into law. So, that system of selection should also be clarified because this could also have unintended consequences in terms of in terms of motivating or recruiting really deserving students or demotivating them depending on how we would interpret the the final version of this bill when it passes into law, Mister Chair. But as a rule, the Commission on Higher Education supports any program that would expand and cater to a greater, to a greater number of our youth, of our young people and students. We want more of them coming in, especially in their maritime industry and maritime courses. But with a caveat, of course, that along with the increase in the number of students should be the increase in the funding support and resources for the PMMA to ensure that there will be no decline in the quality, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, what I understand from the bill is this is on top basically of the current number of students that they accept. What these two bills are attempting to do is to ensure that there is sort of equal distribution. But this is on top of the, I would say prerogative of the PMMA to have more students coming from these different municipalities or provinces, provided, of course, they comply with all the requirements of admission in. Now, Commodore Abutal, I guess I would like to ask, 'yung seven hundred plus na capacity, ilan ba kayo ngayon? I might have gotten the wrong interpretation of this. Your current capacity is more than seven hundred. How many do you have right now?
As of now, we are eight hundred fifty, I think, like that, around the eight hundred fifty-plus cadets onboard. We are actually over capacity.
So, your capacity, you know, kulang na, as of now, because you have more than eight hundred?
That's right, sir. Totoo yan. Our cadets are now staying in hotel accommodation that is not intended for as a barracks. We, in 2019, we requested a budget to increase the barra capacity, but we were only given a small amount to increase to another fifty.
You exceeded, in other words, the capacity of the university or the academy, and therefore, if we add additional two hundred fifty-three students, we need to really fund by providing not only the tuition but also even the required infrastructure to house these students who will be enrolling at the PMMA.
Of course, Chairman.
Now, I understand better the concern that you have raised earlier, and I agree with you that we simply not only be interested in having more students coming from the various districts, but to ensure that this is funded by the government through, of course, the annual GAA that we will approve here in Congress. Okay, I hear.
Chair, may I? The reason why we fully support the program is because we have at the moment an increased number of requirements of cadets and officers, Filipino officers. Although we have a challenge from MSA and so on, we don't feel the challenge from PMMA. We, in fact, we have an increased number of requirements from our partners. Our partners rose from forty-three to fifty-five now, shipping company partners. And even the passenger vessel, Carnival Cruise, joined in getting cadets from us. So that's why we would like to support this bill, but supporting it needs also support from the government.
Yes, I think I understand very clearly what you're trying to say to us. It's not simply adding more students coming from the various districts, but we need to fund this. So you want to put that sort of an amendment, probably, appropriating funds, therefore, kailangan, masama yan, to ensure that this increase coming from the various districts is funded by the government. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any any comment from?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, just, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to be clarified on Commodore Abutal. Doon sa two hundred fifty na natatanggap ninyo sa academy selection process, talaga ikumas, bakit hindi natin na lang, kung may, alam ko may makualipad bawat congressional district out of that two hundred fifty eh? Kasi ma-duplicate na 'yung, one, sir, di ba? Magdadagdag pa ng two hundred fifty for every congressional district. Then, mayroon pa silang two fifty-three na mangagaling sa selection process nila. Doon naman sa selection process na yun eh, karamihan 'yung nandito lang malapit sa academy, nawawalan ng tansay 'yung mga nasa malala 'yung distrito, lalo na sa Mindanao. So bakit hindi na lang gawin ni Commodore na out of the two hundred fifty-three, siguradohin nila na bawat distrito representing? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, would you like to answer that Superintendent Abutal?
That's also what we would like to do, so that we can support each district. Unfortunately, even with the advent of online application, our data still suggests that only less than ten percent of the applicants are coming from Mindanao. And some of them are actually restrained to come to Manila dahil sa malayo. And, but if we have someone who is fully supporting them from the beginning until they come to PMMA, that would be ideal. So, we would like to do that, na magkaroon tayo ng each allocation. But at the same time, we need the individual support of our congressmen to send their candidates as well. So that those who will join the entrance examination can be vetted to join the PMMA.
So, 'yung two hundred fifty will be coming from the two hundred fifty-three districts all over the country. But on top of this, you might have students who are also qualified, and they might also come from some of the districts. And you don't like to prejudice them?
No, that's correct, sir.
Yes, as long as, of course, they meet all the admission requirements. They pass the entrance exam, the physical, the psych, or how do you call it? Yeah, the psychiatric test that you normally conduct as part of the process. So, yun lang. Now, probably, you can decide on that later on as to the number, based on your capacity as a college or as an academy.
Yes, that's right, sir.
Subject again to the availability of funds. Okay, thank you. Before we continue, let me introduce some of our colleagues who are online. We have Congresswoman Luisa Quaresma of the Long District of Nueva Biscaya. Okay. Any other comment on these two bills? Okay, I'm, you know, Congresswoman Roque.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move for the consolidation of House Bill number two four five eight and four eight three five and for the approval of this consolidated bill and its committee reports, subject to style and amendments. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so there is a motion duly seconded that we consolidate House Bills four eight three five and two four five eight and approve the consolidated bill, subject to style and amendment, hearing no objection, motion is carried. Okay, let's go to the next item in the agenda. Okay, we have House Bill nine five three. Is Vice Chair Gonzalez present online? I think this is more, I mean, we have several issues on this bill. Yeah, okay, Vice Chair Rodriguez will sponsor House Bill five nine five three. You are now recognized, Congresswoman Rodriguez.
Sir Chair, in behalf of the Marino Party List Representative, Sandro Gonzalez, I adopt the sponsorship of the House Bill number nine five three as explanatory notes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that must be a motion, Congressman Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I hear a second of the motion? Okay, so there is a motion duly seconded that the explanatory note of House Bill nine five three be adopted as the sponsorship message of Representative Gonzalez. Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Now, let's call again Commodore Joel Abutal of the PMMA to give the position of PMMA with regards to this particular bill. Commodore Abutal?
Chair, thank you for it. Sir, PMMA supports the bill by Marino Party List Congressman Sandro Gonzalez as timely and reasonably for the benefit of the Filipino seafarers and so that we can once and for all align the requirements of international to our local educational schemes. As of the moment, when the the Senior Maritime High School, which was reportedly to be used for those who intend to join the maritime stream, where actually didn't achieve its purpose, that graduates of senior high would be able to get a job and certified as competent to take the position. And those two years which was lost can be incorporated and make a reasonable track for those who intend to join the maritime profession going forward to become ratings, to become junior officers, as well as to become senior officers. So we support this bill as timely for everyone and for the country. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Superintendent Abutal. May I now call the President of Palumpon Institute of Technology, Dr. Norberto Olavides? Dr. Olavides, you are now recognized. Yes, Dr. Olavides.
Sir Chair, good morning.
Yes, Dr. Olavides.
PIT being Maritime Institution, interpose no objection to the approval of House Bill number nine five three. And we noticed, Mr. Chair, that the intention of the author is to improve our maritime education in the Philippines, especially in the area of shipboard, in the area of facilities, in the area of itinsee. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to, before we continue, I'd like to recognize.
Thank you very much. I would like to.
Representative Use Esakino II of the First District of Agusan del Norte, and I think I missed earlier, Congresswoman Marisa Delmar Maxino of the OFW Party List. Okay, thank you. Can we now call on Dr. Oliver Tito, the Vice President for Academic Affairs of the Sambuanga State Colleges of Maritime, Marine Sciences and Technology. Dr. Tito? Dr. Tito? Well, if he's not around, may I ask the Assistant Vice President of the Maritime Academy of Asia and the Pacific, Chief Engineer Rudy Paizo? Okay, Dr. Paizo, Engineer Paizo, you are recognized.
Good morning, everyone. I am Chief Engineer Rodolfo Paizo. I am the Executive Director of the Center for Advanced Maritime Studies. I am also the Assistant Vice President for the Maritime Academy of Asia and the Pacific. We are supportive of this proposal, but we would like to cite some possible issues of concern. For example, under the definition of terms, modularized curriculum, which are independent and non-sequential, this is not possible because you cannot start studying the propeller without studying the auxiliaries first that support it. So first study the auxiliaries before you go to the propulsion plant. So we have, however, no objection to the modularized curriculum, per se. With respect to the definition on shipboard training as structured.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Gusto lang sana naming maintindan, kasi hindi namang kami lahat professional na legible nitong pinag-usapan, sinasabi ninyo. Pwede bang pakie-explain muna kung ano 'yung purpose na sinasabi mo? 'Yung mga curriculum na sinasabi mo?
Yes, maraming salamat po. Ganito po kasi yun. According to the proposed law, the courses should be in modules that are supposed to be independent from one another, and there is no sequence that is required. Ibig sabihin po, hindi ka magsisimula sa grade one, pwede ka magsimula sa grade five, bumalik ka sa grade one, ganun po 'yung sequence na nakalagay po dito sa definition of terms. So, sa barko po, ang nagpapatakbo ng 'yung pinakamalaking makina, ang tawag ay propulsion plant. Napakarami pong maliliit na machinery na kailan tumakbo muna bago tumakbo 'yung malaki. So kailan pag-aralan mo muna yun. So, kung modularized, wala pong problema, pero 'yung non-sequential, ay may problema po tayo. So okay lang po 'yung modularized. So huwag lang pong ilagay na non-sequential at saka independent. Hindi po siya, may mga independent po, pero marami po na kailangan na prerequisite. So yun po 'yung existing curriculum po ngayon ng CHED. I am also a member of the Committee for the Technical Working Group for the Curriculum Development of CHED Marina. 'Yung curriculum po ngayon ay modularized na po, pero meron pa ring sequence.
Okay.
May I continue po?
Hindi, 'yung kasing nakalagay dito, definition lang ng term. 'Yung modular curriculum nakalagay dito, curriculum into small, discrete modules or units that are independent, kasi modular yan, dapat nga independent. Non-sequential and typically short in duration. Pwedeng definition lang ito. Sa implementation ngayon, kung applicable ang modular curriculum, yun ang gagamitin. Kung hindi naman applicable, eh kailangan sequential, alinbawa. No? Yun ang ano natin. Kasi, alinbawa, kumuha ka ng English one, English two, kailangan, makakuha ka ng English one before English two. Parang ganun ang konsepe. But there are some programs that are really modular that even you take Level two, kung tapos ka na alinbawa ng Level one, gusto mo na kumuha ng Level two, modular yan, pwede mong kunin, o kaya hindi relevant sa pinupursmo. Yun lang naman ang, nasa definition lang ito.
Okay. Maraming salamat po.
Pagpunta natin sa implementation ito, doon tayo pupunta sa other section. Yun ang explanation doon. Oo, sige.
With that explanation po, we are not opposing.
Yes, and that's why you have no objection on this.
Next is the definition also of the structured shipboard training. We are taking issue of this because we are a signatory of the STCW, Standard of Training Certification and Watchkeeping.
Anong section yun?
Definition of terms po, section E.
Section E, okay.
Okay, under the present dispensation po, pag sinabi po nating structured, yun po 'yung 12 months. However, under the convention that we signed, STCW 95, amended in 2010, dalawa po 'yung track. Pwede kang structured, pwedeng unstructured. But anyway, definition of terms nga lang po ito, pwedeng baguhin letter on sa IRR.
Yes, I see.
Yes, okay. And then, doon po sa Chapter Three, which is the creation of the Maritime Education and Training Regime, wala po kaming objection, kaya lang, we would like to suggest na hindi pwede po 'yung puro matataas kasi tulad noong araw na Maritime Training Council pa, pababayaan na lang sa mga nag-aati na masisipag, pero 'yung mismong mga departamento, because it's not their line function, hindi po nila masyadong magpupuko. So, mas maganda kung, balik na nga lang 'yung Maritime Training Council, but at a lower level po. Kasi masyadong ano.
O, ang Executive Secretary po eh. Tapos, under the Office of the President, eh wala nang tayong presidente kung siya po ang gagawa nito, at saka 'yung Executive Secretary. I think I agree with you, Mr. Paizo, that it should not be placed to that level eh, kasi masyadong napakataas and napakadaming ginagawa ng Executive Secretary. Oo.
Thank you.
Yeah, we take note of your suggestion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. With respect to Section Seven, which is centralized shipboard training that will be managed by Marina, we believe that Marina does not have a capability to schedule the shipboard training of about 22,000 to 25,000 per year. For example, even the Japanese government and the US government, they only schedule three months out of the one year and the rest is up to the institution concerned.
So, what is your suggestion on that, on Section Seven? There will be definitely training, but the frequency should be reviewed and at the same time probably reduce the number.
Yeah, we are not agreeable to giving the authority to schedule and-
By Marina?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anong suggestion?
Right now, each institution, as required by CHED, will have a Department of Shipboard Training who do this activity. Under the under the watchful eye of CHED and Marina right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And it's working, you don't need to change it. So, in other words, even in Section in Section Four, the creation of the Technical Committee on Maritime Education and Training should be probably placed under CHED, not under the Executive Secretary. Is that what you propose to?
Yes, sir, because higher education is the province of the-
Okay, so I think we will incorporate that change in this particular provision.
Also, sir, under the Section Seven, Second Paragraph, the Marina in consultation with shipping operators shall prescribe standard fee to be paid by the cadets for the shipboard training, which will cover cost of food, lodging, hygiene, and other expenses. We would like to call the attention of the Committee, Mr. Chair, because we are a signatory of the Maritime Labor Convention 2006 and according to Section 3.2, food must be provided for free to all seafarers, so. Including lodging po, libre po, pasta seafarer. So, since we signed the Maritime Labor Convention, I think we have to comply with the provision, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. And lastly, sir, on the seafarers upgrading and promotion qualification for examination for maritime officers, we pose no objection, but we would like to call the attention on the submission that we, the Philippine government submitted to the IMO, that the submission for becoming officers is to be qualified, a graduate of CHED-recognized higher education. So, kung ipapasa po ito dahil susulat uli tayo sa IMO, para sabihing binago po namin 'yung aming pamamaraan under Regulation 1.7 po ng STCW po.
So, dito, you want this provision to be deleted because it does not require to qualify as an applicant for examination for marine object engine officer na kailangan, meron kang baccalaureate degree. So, dapat ialisin ito?
Ah, yes, po, sa ngayon po, kasi naisubmit po yan sa IMO na hindi ka pwedeng maging official kung hindi ka graduate ng CHED.
So, ito kasi, rinireverse 'yung existing IMO na yun?
Yes.
Okay, so you want this deleted in this particular bill?
Not necessarily, sir, it's up to you, but if we do it, we have to write another letter to IMO that we are amending our process of qualifying officers.
But in your opinion, qualify even without a baccalaureate degree? Regardless of whether that is a ruling that we have agreed upon in the past?
No, sir. I believe that you should be a graduate of higher education because right now we are number one in the world, but we are also number one in protection and indemnity, meaning number one tayo sa safety na accidente.
So, it might jeopardize our position even when we allow those who have not graduated or finished itong baccalaureate degree before they take the examination?
Right, sir. As a matter of fact, right now Marina is doing that for domestic shipping under Memorandum circular 2012.04. Training, training lang, pero they don't want these people to go abroad because they know that they are not capable of performing the requirement of competence under the convention po.
Yeah, but this should not prevent probably, siguro, pwedeng another level yun, they might take another exam other than what is given for those who have degrees. And probably that can be a second layer, if you may.
Yes, sir.
Instead of, you know, finishing, because they might have an equivalency program that will allow them, but not the same level as that with a bachelor's degree.
Yes, sir, we already have that, Chair. DCOC.
DCOC.
Domestic Certificate of Competence.
Okay, so yun na lang ang pwedeng isama natin dito?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. I think these are good points, Mr. Paizo. Ah, Paizo?
Paizo po.
Okay. Yes, Congressman, you have the floor now.
Chief Engineer.
Paizo.
Paizo. Ito bang mga requirement ito or prerequisite sa magkakuha ka ng license? May certain tonnage man ng vessel na kasi parehasa kami sa fishing industry, nahihirapan kami sa mga requirement ng Marina. Ang tonnage namin is nasa 250 and below. Tapos, nire-require kami ng napakadaming mga, yung sa mga boot cap din namin, at saka yung sa mga engineer.
Totoo po 'yung sabi ninyo, may limitations po na tinatawag. Yung para po sa international, ang minimum is 750 kilowatt propulsion and 500 gross tonnage. For the domestics, meron tayong, 'yung sinasabi nyo na maliliit lang, up to 499, pero meron din po silang unlimited certificate competence. When we say unlimited, kahit na ano pwede, pero 'yung limited, specified po 'yung kaya niyang i-handle na four horsepower or gross tonnage po. Marami pong layer po yan.
Sumi mga batas-batayan nito?
Nasa ano po, Marina Memorandum Circular po. O kaya 'yung PMMA na tinatawag, Philippine Merchant Marine Rules and Regulation po.
At saka necessary ba sa mga fishing vessel na i-require ng Marina? Yung maging compliant sa IMO?
Sa ngayon po, hindi po, pero may bagong convention, I think we are already a signatory, ang teatag standard for training certification and watchkeeping for fishermen. Hindi pa po natin pinapatupad sa Pilipinas, so sa ngayon, hindi pa po pinapatupad yun. However, if you're going to other countries and fish there, they might require you to have a COC STCF po, 'yung teatag na fishing.
Yes, Congressman, yeah.
Kasi hindi naman natin pwedeng ikumpara 'yung mga lalo ng mga European fishing vessel, or US, Japan, against a traditional fishing vessel na ginagamit natin sa Pilipinas. Hindi natin kayang ikumplay 'yung mga requirement na yan. Yun lang pag provide ng individual na kamarote bawat crew. Never mangyari yan, lalo na sa mga carrier natin.
Totoo po yun, kaya ang sabi ng IMO, as long as you are in the domestic waters, hindi panapatupad po 'yung requirement ng IMO. Only kung pupunta ka sa ibang bansa para manghisda ka dun at pinapatupad sa bansa na yun, then hinahanapin po sa crew niyo yun. Pero kung hindi pinapatupad, kasi bibihira pa po ang nagpapatupad, hindi po hinahanap.
Eh guys, amin, hindi naman po kami sa iisip nangingisda, nasa international waters kami, pero walang maya ri ng karagatan na yun. Diba? Kaya hindi natin matawag na pag-aari ng ibang bansa.
Yes, po. I think po, sa ngayon eh, wala pa po talagang enforcement naong STCF. Pero possibly in the future, kasi nga po, kaya po, tinatag po 'yung tinatawag na standard daw ba, competence na yan, para mabawasan po 'yung mga disgrasya, kasi palaging human error po 'yung number one aspect. So, as long as mamentain natin 'yung safety, na sa ngayon ay hindi tayo masyadong mataas. Although, magaling po tayo sa tinatawag na routine, napakagaling ng Pilipino, kaya number one po ang Pilipino. Pero pag nagbabago po 'yung circumstance ya, yung the way to assess the situation, situational awareness po, and then forecasting what will happen if you don't do anything or if you do anything, doon po nahihirapan po 'yung mga graduates po natin. And that's the reason I like them to be graduates of higher education because one focus of higher education is the development of critical thinking po. Maraming salaman.
Thank you, Chief Engineer Paizo, and thank you much, Jay.
Thank you, thank you very much Congressman Sid. Before we continue, may I call on or may I recognize Representative Maria Pe Abunda of the Long District of Eastern Samar and our Vice Chair Michaela Angela B. Swansing of the First District of Nueva Ecija. At this point, may I call on Ms. Myla Macadaan, the OIC of the National Maritime Polytechnic Yes, the National Maritime Polytechnic Citizen Institute? Yeah, Ms. Myla Macadaan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Honorable members of the House of Representatives, NMP fully support the creation of this Bill 953. We love the initiative of Congressman Gonzalez, according to Party List, for the creation of this Bill to identify the root causes of the challenges being faced by the Maritime Training and Assessment Division. We interpose no objection on the purpose and objective of this Bill, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is that all, Ms. Macadaan?
That would be all, Mr. Chair. We fully support the creation of this Bill.
Yeah, may we hear at this point the representative from the Commission on Higher Education? Should this be placed under the Commission? I would like to know if there will be some concerns or problems of the Commission on Higher Education instead of putting it under the Office of the Executive Secretary and overall under the Office of the President?
Mr. Chair, I may. Mr. Chair, Attorney Spocky Farland here. Yes. The primary office in charge of the maritime program on the part of CHED is the Office for Program and Standards Development. They're part of the, it is under their office that we have them.
Attorney Farland? Anna Lagobcia? Okay, while we are waiting for Attorney Farland of CHED, I would like to recognize Congresswoman Marisa Delmar. Congresswoman Marisa? Of the OFW Party List. Yes, Congresswoman Marisa?
Yes, good morning, Chair. Mr. Chair, I would like to address this question to CHED. One of the functions of Marina in relation to STCW implementation in accordance with Republic Act Number 10635 is to recommend to CHED and Bank the closure or phase out of substandard maritime education institutions, as well as to recommend alternative schemes for the affected educational institutions. Now that we are seeking this institution's establishment and accreditation to operate, what are the parameters taken by CHED to ensure that these proposed training institutions will adhere to the international standards we urgently need for the industry, Mr. Chair?
Yes, very good question, my good friend Congresswoman Marisa. May we hear from Attorney Farland? Are you back?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I apologize for the technical issues. I just had some problems, my laptop suddenly went offline, and I'm using the account of one of our CHED staff.
Congressman Marisa, Attorney Farland?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Regarding the questions of our representative or Congresswoman Delmar Magzino? Yes, yes, ma'am. We have to look at the maritime education. The totality of the maritime education is divided into two. Those which provide for baccalaureate degrees, these are part, these are the responsibility of CHED. Now, for those trainings which require simply certifications or the trainings, what we call as training maritime trainings only, which do not earn any baccalaureate degree, these are under the jurisdiction of ESTA. So, what CHED can speak for right now are only those which are only those education programs which lead to a maritime degree or maritime-related degree, Madam Chair. Now, on the part of CHED, we have we have now a joint memorandum circular with the Marina, which allows for a more collaborative and unified approach of CHED and Marina when it comes to ensuring the quality and the delivery of maritime education by our maritime educations offering baccalaureate degrees or education degrees. But when it comes to the content of the training itself or the content of the education program itself, these are still under the primary jurisdiction of the Commission on Higher Education, and we have a technical panel in charge of the maritime education. In fact, our technical panel members are here and they actually prepared already with, because the technical panels are under the supervision of the Office of Program and Standards Development of CHED. They have already reviewed and have actually prepared their comments on the pending measure, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, and to our honorable Congresswoman. Just a preview of this comment. We do laud the effort to really look into our maritime education, how to make it simpler, but still compliant with international standards, especially with the issues right now that we are facing when it comes to maritime education and training. But there are, and so we laud this effort and the attention being given to our maritime education industry and sector. But I think the initial comments, there are initial comments from our technical panel and the OPSD, which brings- which brings, uh, which makes us not as supportive when it comes to the details of the said bills. And I would, uh, we have, um, I think our technical panel is ready to present their, uh, position, especially on the detailed provisions of, uh, of, of the bill. Uh, Chief, yeah. Engineer Habok of our Maritime Education Technical Panel, uh, I think is present to present the, uh, position of our, uh, of, of our technical panel on this said bill, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, uh, Congresswoman, uh, Marisa, uh, would you like to respond to the answer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Attorney Farolet, uh, this, uh, representation that I'm making now is because of the dialogue that we had with the maritime industry. And I would like to say that in the International Monetary, the I M O, we, they have seen a lot of inconsistencies, deficiencies, and shortcomings when it comes to our training and our educational institution. We hope that this will not affect our maritime industry that is earning a lot for our remittances. And I would like to say that we have to improve our education system, the modules, the trainings that are given to our maritime industry, because they were complaining that they are given modules that they already know. It's like that they should have a college level, but what they are training right now and wasting their time is like for at the elementary level, which should not be the case. We are the largest exporter of our maritime, uh, in the whole world, but we also have a lot of deficiencies that has to be corrected immediately, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, Congresswoman Magcino. Uh, would you like, we can ask the, uh, the colleague of, uh, Congress, uh, of Attorney Farolet from CHED, Mr. Amok?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, yes, I think, uh, while, uh, Engineer Abok is, uh, uh, preparing to join us and speak, um, we, we would like to thank Congresswoman, uh, Magcino on her comments. And, uh, we want to assure her that definitely we are, uh, sensitive, uh, to, to her comments. We actually share her sentiments, and, uh, that is the reason why CHED is also undertaking, uh, innovations and, uh, even the regulation function. We are working closely with the MARINA on, on making sure that, uh, we crack down on, uh, those who offer, um, non-quality or non-compliant maritime programs. But at the same time, we want, we are giving opportunity for our schools, maritime schools, and education institutions to really maximize the, the framework and improve themselves, and give them assist, and assist them, uh, in the best way possible so that we can really meet the standards, uh, which are required from our seafarers by, uh, the International Maritime Organization and other jurisdictions and other territories, Madam Chair. And, uh, I think if the details could be further discussed by Engineer Abok, Habok.
Yes, uh, Attorney Farolet, is it possible that, uh, CHED should submit to this committee the list of all schools offering baccalaureate programs for our maritime, uh, uh, for the maritime industry? And, uh, probably we will also request the TESTA if there are uh, schools, uh, registered with TESTA that are offering, uh, programs, short-term programs, uh, even modular programs that do not require, uh, or the conformance of, uh, a college degree, uh, to these, uh, students.
On the part of, uh, CHED, Mr. Chair, we will provide that list to the committee and to the members, honorable members of the committee, Mr. Chair. I just cannot speak on behalf of TESTA.
In addition to that, you include your assessment on these different schools offering these programs?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We, we, we will comply, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let, let's have, uh, Attorney, uh, Mr. Abok, uh, to, uh, you know, answer some of the questions raised earlier by Congresswoman, uh, Magcino.
Yeah, good morning, uh, Honorable Chair and, uh, our honorable Congressman, Congresswoman, who are on this meeting, and of course, my colleague in CHED, and also to my, uh, friend, Chief Engineer Peso. Okupuay san Chief Engineer din, and, uh, I'm also working, uh, for CHED as member of the Technical Working Committee, especially the Technical Committee for, for the revision and, uh, of maritime curriculum. I just want to reiterate my, uh, my, uh, agreement to what, uh, Chief Engineer Peso mentioned, uh, few minutes ago. And, uh, to the CHED and MARINA at the moment, I agree that under the framework that we have today, uh, all these, uh, findings, uh, from two thousand six until today are now being addressed. It's a sad note that it took this long time. But in fairness to the all stakeholders, as I said, the root cause of all of this, it is because of the sustainable of our governance in terms of, uh, the leadership in MARINA, which is the lead agency in the implementation of, uh, the S T C W under Republic Act one oh six three five. And, uh, with this, uh, the main, the main problem we have, or the main challenges we have are now being addressed in terms of the monitoring. Now, it is not that easy to acquire the, the needed competence. And as the years go by, I've been a witness of all this development of MARINA and CHED in terms of the implementation of S T C W. And the competence requirement, I can say that we have now on both, uh, MARINA and CHED that requirement, that the competence requirement for evaluators. I have seen, uh, all the, uh, activities, all the experiences with, uh, E M S A from two thousand six until the latest one, including independent evaluation. And I say, it is not easy. It takes one consistent interpretation of S T C W. And, uh, at the moment, CHED and MARINA is in a good relationship to implement what is the right according to the real intent of the implementation of S T C W. The administration today, MARINA and CHED, uh, implement according to the provisions of the S T C W, especially on the mandatory requirements. We cannot just, uh, refer to the sentiments of our seafarers. Of course, we, uh, we, uh, value that one. They have the valid, uh, quest, uh, uh, questions and sentiments. But most of us, most of our seafarers has to be, uh, informed well on the mandatory provisions of S T C W. And in the part of the schools, it is, uh, just unfortunate that because of, uh, the inconsistent administrations, different interpretations, they were confused of what to implement because of also of our changes in our, uh, curriculum. But today, since we are now, uh, complying to the independent evaluation findings as well the E M S A, and, uh, with all said and being done, we still have a very good chance of complying to the Regulation one slash seven Communications of Information that the Philippines is implementing the S T C W in full and complete effect, and the result of the independent evaluations where all the findings are totally closed with objective evidences of implementation. We still have that window until December. That's what the administration has mentioned. And we look forward to attain that, uh, that goal. Maritime stakeholders are now collaborating with CHED and MARINA. We from the private sectors, we know that, uh, MARINA and CHED need us. So we always, uh, present our, uh, our, uh, face-to-face or online, uh, meetings just to ensure that we can be of help. Because we know what happened way back nineteen ninety-five and until today. It's a long story, but still we are very optimistic. And that with this, uh, bill being, uh, reviewed now, there are good points and, uh, uh, some needs, uh, clarification. Because if this bill with regards to the establishment, creating Technical Committee on Maritime Education and Training, uh, it will be, uh, another confusion while we have now the existing framework. Let the existing framework work under Republic Act one oh six three five. And that's the technical panel under the leadership of MARINA, and approve any, uh, uh, discussion, agreement will have to be approved by CHED. I, I think, uh, with that, uh, everybody's learned from our lessons. It's high time to act, uh, cohesively, be able to, to co, uh, comply with I M O requirements. I, I think, uh, that's, uh, my comment at the moment. And, uh, I hope, well, we can, uh, uh, entertain questions if there are. Thank you, uh, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Abok. Uh, may I request that, uh, you submit in writing your position on this, uh, particular bill? So when we finalize it, we can incorporate some of the points that you have raised, uh, as far as this bill is concerned, uh, Mr. Abok?
Yes, I'm, uh, Honorable Chair. We will do that, and CHED is preparing for the position paper with regards to this bill. Marami salamat po.
Can you submit that before the end of the week?
Uh, yes, I will, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, uh, Congresswoman Magcino? As you finally comment on the comment of, uh, CHED?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Habok. I would like to say thank you for that, um, you know, that best effort that you are doing right now. But I would like to make it crystal clear that MARINA is the only implementor to, uh, to recommend to CHED. The modules that has to be taken, the modules that have been, uh, have to be upgraded to be able to cope with the international standard. And I would like to agree with our, uh, Chairman, Mr. Pong Marggo, that you have, may we ask, Mr. Chair, to submit the institution's name to be able to check on them, whether they are doing the right thing, whether they are following the rules and implements, be able to be standard, uh, uh, to be able to have the international standard for S T C W for our, for our maritime industry. Thank you so, so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Congresswoman, uh, Magcino. Yeah, so there will be two items that, uh, we will ask CHED to do. One is to submit to us the list of all, uh, schools offering baccalaureate degree programs for our, uh, uh, seafarers. And at the same time, I will also ask CHED to do the same, to submit, uh, uh, to us the training schools, no? Uh, and the second one is we will ask them to submit their final position paper with regards to House Bill nine five three.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, may, we, yes, uh, yes, Attorney Farolet?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, regarding the list of training schools, we shall coordinate also with TESTA regarding it, uh, as the list is with them. And, uh, we just also, uh, felt compelled to, uh, place on record our opposition to the proposal in the bill that, uh, the MARINA administrator be part of state, of the governing board of state universities and colleges that offer maritime education. I think this would create a lot of complications and confusion because there is a provision on the bill regarding the inclusion of the MARINA administrator as a member of, actually a chairperson of the state university, of state universities and colleges that offer, uh, maritime education. What we fear here is that, um, maritime education is simply a part. Uh, in many S U Cs, it's, it only, um, it only comprise, um, two or even one program of the state university. And making it as a basis for the, making the, the MARINA administrator as the chairperson could create a lot of confusion and, uh, uh, problems when it comes to the governance for S U Cs. So we do propose that instead of making the MARINA administrator a, um, the chairperson, a chairperson of the S U C, that there, that the provision be amended to make it in such a way that on all matters regarding maritime education, the MARINA administrator or his represent, or her representative, uh, shall be consulted or shall be made a permanent, uh, resource person, uh, in, uh, in all those meetings or, um, sessions of the governing board. Similar to the, similar to the, uh, participation of CHED Regional Directors and CHED Personnel or CHED Resource Person in the, actually as permanent resource persons when it comes to the operation of local universities and colleges, Mr. Chair. Uh, that is all, Mr. Chair, and we will comply with the two instructions of the honorable committee, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Attorney Farolet. We, we take note of your suggestion that instead of, uh, the, uh, uh, the MARINA be represented in all the S U Cs where there are courses offered. I think that will be too much for them. Uh, I think in cases where there is a need for them to bring out issues and concerns, we can just invite them probably to join in the board meeting of the various S U Cs offering, uh, MARINA programs, uh, for our, uh, constituents or for the whole country, uh, uh, Attorney Farolet.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much. May we hear, uh, from our colleague?
Uh, so we, we still have some other, uh, uh, resource persons uh, from the private, uh, uh, sector, from the Philippine Association of Private Schools, Colleges, and Universities. This is the pub school. May we hear from Dr. Antonio Del Carmen? Attorney Del Carmen, Doctor Del Carmen? Okay, what about from, uh, 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 Mr. Mangli? Mangli Moot, the President of the Philippine Association of Maritime Institutions?
Good, good day, good noon to everyone. Thank you for the acclamation, uh, the chairperson and to the all the honorable members of Congress present, uh, in this meeting. Uh, thank you very much for inviting us to speak in this more important undertaking. We laud the efforts of Congress to address the issues and challenges of the maritime industry, particularly the education and training, uh, sector, which has been, uh, in the limelight recently and has always been, uh, since time immemorial. However, our association, PAMI, which has seventy-five members or seventy-five schools as its members, uh, we oppose the, this bill, uh, House Bill nine five three uh, because of several issues. And because of the, for instance, um, I think it was already mentioned already by my esteemed colleague, Chief Engineer Habok, that there is already an existing law, R A ten six three five, that already designates MARINA to be the sole and lead government agency to address the international standards as provided by the I M O and the S T C W. There is another, MARINA, together with CHED, has several committees under their wings. In fact, uh, I would like to believe, uh, there are four committees under CHED, and equally there are also four committees under MARINA's wing that are, that addresses these issues. Our fear here is that an introduction of a new committee shall bring more confusion. And in fact, that is one of the arguments given by Chief Engineer Habok, that, um, since two thousand and six, the problem of, uh, the education and training has always been there. And it is because of the confusion brought about by the government agencies. and the inconsistencies brought about again by the government agencies involved. I would like to make it clear and I would like to let everyone know that MHEIs here, all the schools, are always in the bad light and viewed as the culprit here. But be clear that what the school is doing is only reflective of what regulations, provisions that these different committees by Marina and Chad have been providing. In fact, Mr. Chair, since I became President, there has been already, I think, three or four in the last six years, there have been already three or four changes in the Marina Administrator. And in that, in those six years, there have been already four changes of curriculum for the maritime education. Kaya po litung-litunapu kami kung ano talaga susundan po namin, no? In fact, my colleagues here in the maritime education can attest that presently, we are managing two or three different curriculums at the same time. One for the first year, then the second year is a different curriculum, then the third and fourth year is another different curriculum. So it's really hard to manage different curriculums. And this is a result of having separate committees. So our fear is that an additional committee can bring more confusion to the mix. I do not know at this point that if this can be a clear solution to our present problem right now. Now, for the interest of Mr. Chair, we will be submitting our position paper on this matter. Since it's already noon, I think that will be the best thing to do at this point, Mr. Chair. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your input. We will appreciate if we can have a copy of your position paper before the end of the week.
Mr. Chair, can it be by next week? Because our members are also busy in developing the other curriculums that Chad has provided to us.
Okay, sige. We can probably next Monday na lang.
We will try, Mr. Chair. We will try.
From now, I hope you can do that. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may add, on another issue that I, actually I was compelled to, just compelled to react through the statement of the good Congressman Maxino, that Marina just recommends. Actually, ma'am, hindi po nagre-recommend po ang Marina. Because of EO 63, Marina now is the lead. And they're primarily, they're primarily movers of the development of the curriculum and even in the monitoring and everything po. Hindi lang po sila recommend na po ngayon. They are the implementor.
Yes.
So, and because of this, hindi lang po sila recommendory. I think this is also one issue that maybe the Congress can address.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. Your position is noted.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congresswoman Marisa?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I fully know that Marina is the full implementor, so they have the authority to recommend the needed training modules to uplift our maritime industry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before we continue, I would like to recognize Congresswoman Lucille Naba of the LON District of Gimaras and Congresswoman Franz Castro of the ACT Teachers Partilis. From the Filipino Association for Maritimeers Employment, Mr. Use Kato, the Vice President for Internal Affairs. Mr. Kato?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good noon to everyone. I'm sorry I was cut off. We had some technical glitch. But I'd like to say a few words regarding House Bill 953. And I'm sure it was already mentioned by the PAMI President earlier. We do not support this bill for the simple reason that it will go in conflict with RA 10635, which is the Marina law. And also because of the Emsa situation right now. This will be adding another layer, and we are afraid that it will add more complications to our existing problems right now. FAME, which is the biggest association of licensed mining agencies, comprised of one hundred sixteen mining agencies, regular members, and six associate members, believe that Marina should do some corrective actions with regards to non-conformities as for the Emsa audit. And a very big chunk of the observations passed concerns maritime training and education, the curriculum, our officers. And to add another layer to this, even if the intent is good and we allow the intent, will add more complications. So probably we should finish first with our existing problems, let Marina do its task. And as a matter of fact, FAME has been offering technical assistance through its experts and attending that various TWGs. So we'd like to say that let's simplify first our matters and let Marina do its duties as mandated by RA 10635. That is all, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Kato. I would like also to suggest that you submit your position paper to us. If you can do it before the end of the week or early next week, we'll appreciate that very much.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we will comply. We will submit it at the soonest possible time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, can we hear now from our good friend, the beauteous lady from? Yeah. Yeah, from San Blagoan del Sur, Congresswoman Yu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the creation of a technical working group on House Bill Number 953 to thresh out the issues and concerns and to incorporate the recommendations of the resource persons in the bills. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any second to the motion? Mr. Chair, seconded. Okay, so there is a motion, Julie seconded, that we create a technical working group to address all the issues and concerns and reflect the proposed changes of House Bill 953. Hearing no objection to the motion, the motion is carried. Okay, now let's proceed to House Bill 2427. I think Congresswoman Rupus Rodriguez is not present, so probably we will tackle House Bill 2427. And let's go to the next item in the agenda. We have House Bill 4487. This is an act creating a district office of the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority in the first district of South Cotabato to be established in the municipality of Palumolok, South Cotabato, and appropriating funds therefore. May I ask now the sponsor of the bill, Congressman Isidro Lumayag, to sponsor House Bill 4487?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shall I? Yes, Mr. Chair, again, thank you. This bill seeks to the creation of a Technical Education and Skills Authority District Office for the first Legislative District of South Cotabato and to be established in the municipality of Palumolok, South Cotabato. Through Republic Act Number 11243, the first district of South Cotabato was reapportioned in 2019, thereby separating, creating the LON District of General Santos City. As a result thereof, the first district of South Cotabato is now reduced to the municipalities of Tupi, Tampakan, and Palumolok. Prior to the reapportionment, local residents of Palumolok, Tupi, and Tampakan, who intended to avail of TESDA services, training and programs, need to travel to TESDA offices located outside the district. This is not only inconvenient and time-consuming for them, but also in the additional cost. The establishment of TESDA District Office in Palumolok, South Cotabato will therefore make TESDA services and trainings more accessible to the local constituency. The first district of South Cotabato likewise hosts Dole Philippines Incorporated, the largest pineapple producer in the world, and many agribased industries. These industries, together with their allied enterprises, are constantly in need of highly skilled workers, machine operators, professional drivers, industrial workers, and other related services, service providers. The establishment of TESDA District Office in this jurisdiction is not only strategic due to the presence of these industries, but is highly beneficial for the local residents and ultimately to local growth and development. Accordingly, the municipality of Palumolok is a first-class suburban municipality. It is the biggest municipality in the first district of South Cotabato and even of the entire South Cotabato Province. It ranked ninth overall most competitive municipality and fourth in the economic dynamism pillar in the Philippines. It is economically developed and is becoming a center for commerce and industry in Region 12. It is also highly accessible through its established road network. Palumolok, South Cotabato, as a site for TESDA District Office, is therefore ideal and administratively practicable. Finally, local residents of the first district of South Cotabato, especially those coming from low-income families, will be able to avail TESDA services right at their doorstep. In the end, vocational skills training shall help them seek practicable livelihood and gain full employment with the locality and elsewhere. The approval of this measure is highly recommended, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Congressman Sid Lumayag, for your sponsorship message. Now, I would like to call on the TESDA officials, starting from Engineer Alfredo Panella, the head of TESDA in South Cotabato, Region 12. Engineer Panella?
Good morning po, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon.
And all the congressperson, of course, my congressperson, my congressman, Honorable Congressman Lumayag, sir. Mr. Chair, with regard to this bill submitted by my very own congressman pertaining to the creation of TESDA District Office to be situated in the first district of South Cotabato in Palumolok, particularly, actually pertains to this, to this proposal, Mr. Chair, it is really feasible likewise in terms of population and in terms of population in South Cotabato. Palumolok has, of course, second to the highest in terms of population of remaining municipalities and cities situated in South Cotabato, South Cotabato Province. So I think, Mr. Chair, we really support for the establishment of the District Office of, situated to be situated in Palumolok, South Cotabato, in which, if we look at the situation of Palumolok, it's really far from the existing province of the, of the existing provincial office, which is now situated in Prorondal City. So I think with this, Mr. Chair, we really support this, but despite of which, we know all the fact that there was a budget constraints in our, in our operation as we look at our budget for this year and maybe in 2023. I know, I know the congressperson, the congressman is also aware of this, but in our, in our level, we are really much willing to serve and to expand really and to be near with the constituents, particularly in the first district of South Cotabato. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Panella. May I now call the Regional Operations Manager of TESDA in the main office of TESDA, Mr. Use Deskalar? Mr. Deskalar?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Deskalar?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the members of this honorable committee. TESDA is supportive of the intention of the bill, however, with second manifestation made by our provincial director as to the budget appropriation, sir.
So you are amenable with the proposal as long as there is a budget that will be allocated for this purpose?
Yes, sir.
Deskalar?
Yes, sir.
You are given the responsibility to propose in our next budget, the budget that will be required to ensure that you implement this particular bill?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
So having said that, you pose no objection to the proposed creation of a TESDA District Office in the first Legislative District of South Cotabato to be established in the municipality of Palumolok, South Cotabato?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. We support the intention of the bill, sir.
Okay, and the implementation, not only the intention?
Yes, sir, the establishment and operationalization of the TESDA District Office, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Deskalar. Now, last, from the TESDA, we have Attorney Joyce Balong of the TESDA Legal Division of, yeah, Attorney Balong?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Good noon, yeah.
Good noon. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the honorable proponent of this bill. We are beginning here thankful for recognizing the significance of technical vocational institution. Mr. Chair, we actually sent a copy of the bill and our regional office posted their comments regarding this. Nasabi na po kanina ng ating kasamahan sa Region 12. However, now we would like to manifest that currently, the province of South Cotabato has an existing provincial office, currently manned by nine plenty of personnel. So should the proposed district office, as the bill says it, in Palumolok, operate the same as the South Cotabato Provincial Office? May we inform the honorable committee po na ito po 'yung pwedeng magiging requirements like number one, manpower to run the proposed office, which would be needing nine plenty of personnel subject to the approval of the Department of Budget and Management Office, and a building with corresponding lot where the proposed office will be established, and furniture. and furniture and fixtures and equipment for operation. So I will back up po yung kiningin namin na, kung pwede po sana, na ma-capture sa bill and proposed budget for this, Mr. Chair, thank you po.
Yeah, actually, if you look at the bill, wala nga't time provision tungkol sa appropriation dito, Congressman. Probably we need to incorporate that, although the title says appropriating funds therefore, no? So, but we need to specify that this will come in the GAA and TESTDA will be the one to recommend when we, when they submit their proposal for the next budget cycle, once this bill is approved. So, let me ask, how far is the provincial TESTDA office with this proposed district office in Palumolok? Attorney Ballong?
Mr. Chair, since our representatives from the regional area may ask that they answer the question po.
Engineer Penelo?
Good noon, Mr. Chair.
Ano po kalayo yung provincial office ng CHED, I mean ng TESTDA dito sa proposed district office sa Palumolok?
More or less, Mr. Chair, nasa mga ano po, mga four, more or less forty kilometers away?
Hmm, so the target service area of the provincial office would be different from this target clientele within Palumolok?
Yes, sir, because Palumolok, sir, covers three municipalities away from, from the existing province of South Cotabato. Situated in Coronel, there were three municipalities, including Palumolok po. So that's far from away from the proper or the existing province of South Cotabato.
So, right now, the provincial office cannot cater to the people in Palumolok because of the distance. And that's probably the reason why there is a need to put up another district office in South Cotabato, particularly in Palumolok?
Yes, Mr. Chair, dahil po medyo malayo yung distansya, but we, we, as the provincial office, TESTDA provincial office situated in Coronel City, actually, inano po namon, namin, Mr. Chair, na hangga't maari mapuntahan po namin talaga yung, yung area ng First District. Saka, isyan din po ay resang responsibility po namin, kahit sa papaano po, sa lahat ang makakaya po namin. But with this proposed bill, Mr. Chair, talaga pong makakatulong din para din po, mata, maipiplis po yung area ng First District po, Mr. Chair. Dahil po, ang dami po, in terms of population, talagang marami doon, and it is really a progressive, progressive district of South Cotabato. Thank you po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, Attorney Penela. Can we now call on Congresswoman Yu? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if there are no more questions and comments, I would like to move for the approval of House Bill Number 4487 by Representative Lumayag of the First District of South Cotabato and its committee report, subject to style and amendments. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any second to the motion? Okay, so there is a motion duly seconded that we approve, House Bill 4487, subject to style and amendments. Hearing no objection to the motion, the motion is approved. Congratulations, yeah. Okay, I think Yes?
Mr. Chair, I just need to correct, inform and manifest correction. Earlier, I mentioned that it was TESTDA who had the list of the training institutes related to maritime training. I was corrected and actually under current, the current framework, it's now the Marina, which has primary jurisdiction over these maritime training institutions, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Your manifestation is noted, Attorney Parolan. As I said, the two other bills, we don't have the authors this morning and probably we will table these two other bills in our next meeting. So we can finish our meeting now. Any motion? Are there other matters you'd like to cover? If there is none, any motion? Yes, Congressman Rodriguez?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adjournment to our meeting.
Okay, okay, so there is a motion duly seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much to everybody and I think we have tackled some of the important bills. And for those bills that have not been tackled this morning, we will reschedule them as we have the presence of our sponsors of these particular bills. So again, maraming salamat, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.